It's my pleasure to call your August 2025 Hannover Borough Council meeting to order. I request that we all stand and recite our Pledge of Allegiance in unison. We'll follow that by a brief moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. With the able assistance of Secretary Felix, we shall call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Bob.
Here.
Mr. Fuentes.
Here.
Mrs. Funk.
Here.
Mrs. Greenhope.
Here.
Mr. Hagberg.
Here.
Mr. Kress.
Mr. Lookinbill.
Here.
Mr. Ricart.
Here.
Mr. Rowland.
Dr. Rupp.
Here.
Solicitor Shultis.
Here.
Manager Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Whitman.
Here.
Secretary Felix. Junior Counsel Cronister. Junior Counsel Day. We have a quorum.
Thank you. This time I let Solicitor Shultis describe the executive session held this evening.
Counsel had an executive session this evening from 6:30 to 6:50 involving a personnel matter under Section 708A1, 4 and 5 of the Sunshine Act.
Okay. At this time, we will have a 2026 budget update presentation by Finance Director Shelton.
Good evening.
Evening.
Just going to give you a quick status of where we are with the budgeting process right now. The budget development is in its initial phase, really focused on creating our baseline budget for 2026. The baseline budget will outline expected profit and loss for each operating and capital project fund. All department directors have submitted their anticipated direct and indirect operating and capital expenses, and Human Resources has provided all the compensation and benefits data. Our revenue estimates for the budget 2026 year will be based on current year forecast and projected growth and rate changes when applicable. The Finance Department is currently consolidating this information for Margie's initial review. The council will first review the budget at the September 23 workshop with monthly updates to follow until final approval in December. Just a quick reminder, developing the borough's annual budget takes several months because of the complex collaborative process that we have to go through, comprehensive planning and gathering of information from multiple departments, various capital and infrastructure projects, buildings, roads, water sewer systems, et cetera. We rely on multiple revenue streams, taxes, fee for service grants, et cetera, and forecasting these accurately requires careful economic analysis as well as ensuring that the timing of the benefit will fall into the correct period. Our estimations often include conservative projections to avoid any budget shortfalls. We don't have that flexibility to change things in midstream, so we try to be a little bit conservative in the approach. Our budgets will go through multiple rounds, a review and estimates may change based off priorities, feedback, or new information that comes available during the year. We'll continue to strive to create the most accurate budget possible to reflect the priorities of the council and the benefits of the community. That's all I've got, if there's any questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
This time I'll open up the first public comment portion of the meeting. I have one pre-submission, that is for Mr. Robert Holt. There you are.
With all due respect, that really wasn't a budget update. That's just a gloss over to the fact that we're looking at a tax increase on top of the three others that you already imposed upon us. And to come and do a budget update in August and ignore the issue month after month, committee meeting after committee meeting, canceled committee meeting after canceled committee meeting, when they said there was no budget, there was plenty of opportunity to talk about what's going to happen with the budget and what are the issues, what are the big items that are going to land on the table in September. But that's the way it is. And I just think that one of the things you have to look at is the sustainability of the current way you manage the library and the way you fund it. The borough has 30%, about 30% of the registered borrowers. We pay something like 60% of the costs. And Penn Township is again 24 some percent. Some of the others, there's like 2% in West Mannheim. And but then there's Adams County, 24%, and they pay nothing. And Conawago Township gives $3,000, which is less than 1% of the $1.245 million budget plus the 666,000 bond issue that you have to pay on every year. It's not sustainable. There needs to be another way to do this. You need to get out of the library business like you promised us. And you really need to eliminate some of the redundant bureaucracy and some of the redundant political groups like the Board of Governors. There's no reason for a Board of Governors if this is going to be on the public stalls and the taxpayers' back. There's no need for a Board of Governors to be appointed by the whim of whoever on whatever day. And really, it just needs to be consolidated, and all of this needs to be brought before the council instead of having these groups kind of be the shills or the frontmen for whatever you want to let happen slide on the table because of the politics of the day. It's not fair, and it's not right. It's not fair to the taxpayers of Hannover. And one last thing, on this zoning map, and I heard discussion at the last meeting, people didn't know what was going on, and it had been going on for several months in open meetings. And some of you came, some of you didn't, and then you sit and profess not to know anything about it. It was sprung on you, like it was sprung on you at the last minute, and it wasn't. It was open, they spent hours and hours in public session. I know I attended all of them, or mostly all of them. And so you need to stop foot dragging and just get on with this business of dealing with some of the zoning issues and bringing it up to date. I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My bad. Community media, is there anyone online wishing to address counsel at this time?
Those joining us via Zoom, you are now able to unmute yourselves if you would like to address counsel.
Seeing none, I'll close public comment number one and move into the consent agenda, Agenda Item 5. The Chair requests that there is a motion for said action.
I have a motion and a second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the consent agenda signify by saying aye, please.
Is the consent agenda including up to 505?
It's all of five, should be, yeah.
Can we separate individual votes on 503, 504, and 505? Could you do that, please?
So I have a, I already have a motion to approve it in its entirety.
Yes.
I will ask if the...
I just had, I'm sorry.
I know. I will ask if the two who made the motion will amend their motion for discussion on something.
I don't need to.
I heard the motion was to, I know Barb made the, Barb made the motion. 503 and 505, is that what you said, Counsel Funk?
503, 504, and 505.
03, 4, and 5.
They're separate. I reluctantly removed that motion. Very reluctantly, but I...
May I suggest that you amend your motion to approve 501 and 502?
Sure, I'm glad to do that.
Is there...
I'll make the motion to approve 501 and 502 then of the consent agenda.
Thank you, and I believe I have Counsel Funk's second on that. Any discussion on that?
No.
All in favor of 501, 502, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, nay. Motion carries. Now I believe we're going to have a discussion on 503. Is there anyone other than Counsel Funk who has a question? And do you want to start with that, your question?
Yes, I'd like to ask, I guess it's AJ. Do we have, on that grant application, my question was, do we have to meet 50% of that grant or anything of that nature? That I really had a question on.
No match.
No, we're okay? Thank you, okay.
Anybody, anything else on 503? I'm going to request a motion for 503 before we move on.
So motion.
A second? All in favor of 503, aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, nay. Motion carries. It's not catching on. 504, Mrs. Funk.
We're not, all we're doing is giving permission. Am I correct on this in the public, for the public hearing and adoption? Once the York Planning Commission and the Hannover Planning Commission comments then are received and addressed, am I correct?
Solicitor Shultis, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Just going to answer.
You go, either one. All right, so you get paid more than me.
So these motions are two things. The first is a zoning ordinance amendment has been prepared with the assistance of our planning commission. Council has had that. The motion is now to forward that draft ordinance amendment to the York County Planning Commission and back to the Hannover Borough Planning Commission for their review and comments. Once we get those comments back, we have to evaluate what those comments are and then decide whether to move the case forward for a public hearing on the amendments. And that is, we have to advertise that, send notices out to all the affected properties. So it'll be a big process to have a public hearing on the actual ordinance amendment itself.
Thank you so much for that clarification.
So A and B under 504 do those two things.
Yes, okay. Then I'll so motion if Bill will accept it.
I will accept. Is there a second for 504? Any further discussion? Speak now. All in favor of 504, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. 505, Counsel Funk.
Well, I'm not sure that I understand this grant application to its fullest extent. So if you can clarify that a little bit more for me tonight at this meeting.
Who would like to be the clarifier of record?
I can speak to that.
Oh, thank you, Margie.
So we're required to do a comprehensive plan every 10 years.
Right.
We're at that stage. Our plan is up. So this is the ability for us to get a grant for half of the amount that it will cost us to do the, to do the new comprehensive plan. So it's a 50% grant where we're not paying $74,000, we're paying $36,000.
Right, right, okay.
So that's...
That's basically it, right? Nothing more, nothing less.
That's exactly.
Okay, well then, I so motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion on 505, further to what's been already held? Calling the question, all in favor of 505, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And that ends the approval of the consent agenda. Moving into Agenda Item 6, the Department of Public Safety. Counsel Fuentes.
I have taken the ordinance number 2382 for restriction on parking on the 100 block of East Park Avenue, east of Railroad Street to accommodate commercial truck movement 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I still have a problem with that. I know that we want to make parking available during off-peak hours over the weekend. That wouldn't evolve with the trucks. But what bothers me is if a truck comes in there on a Sunday night and that is parked full, and he goes to make a turnaround, and he's going, in other words, he's making the delivery from Monday, but he shows up on a Sunday night. That part bothers me with overlapping parking there, you know. So I just have a problem with that. I just think we should keep that ever so clear that you can park there, you know, according to what we decided on at the beginning. But I just think sometimes we, we try to overcompensate for things, and I'm just hesitant on this particular parking restriction, allowing them to park there Friday, Saturday, and into Sunday. And I do know that truckers do come early sometimes to make those deliveries, and we're hindering or creating a problem. So I don't know what anybody else thinks.
Hey, anyone else with an opinion, question, or concern? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor of 601, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And I am a nay as well. But the motion passes, sorry.
Are you a nay for the same reason?
Yes. I brought that up last week as a consideration, but it's still passed. Okay, that will move us into the additional public comment. I have Mr. Holt, you're leading off again.
Yes, I know you did. Did you stand as nay?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to say thank you to Mr. Fuentes, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, for paying attention to what the citizens of the Third Ward had to say about an intersection that's been problematic for some time. And at least getting it to a point, it's going to get serious consideration. It's long overdue. We'll be bringing folks to support it, and I appreciate that. I appreciate you listening to folks and talking to folks. Mr. Chairman, I can't let it go past, again, I went to friends the other night, and I was going to walk home, and my family insisted it wasn't safe to walk home in the evening through the downtown area. So, and I just feel it isn't overall. I've been keeping count of your incidents involving drunk driving, public drunkenness, underage drinking, all kinds of stuff. And this doesn't even include the disorderly conduct and all other kinds of stuff, the thefts, the carry-in-on. And we're up to 73 incidents, including more than 30 DUIs. We're nearing the point, you're going to match last year for public drunkenness. And we really need an open container law, in part so I don't have to go around picking up containers off our neighborhoods, lawns, and streets. And, and, you know, I'm not going downtown anymore. I got a Barbara Lake, but I'm not going there anymore because, you know, I just can't stand seeing people laying in the sidewalks in the morning for whatever reason, for whatever their issues are. And it's just, it's just not safe. And, and I just want you to see what goes on. This is outside of one of the bars, laying in the curb on the sidewalk. And that was, that's the bar owned by one of your star witnesses for that sham hearing you had about the open container law earlier this year. And it was a setup. It wasn't even fair. And I have no confidence in the Public Safety Committee, the Public Governance Committee, whatever you want to call it, Roberts Rules of Order, Erskine May, Chatham House rules, it doesn't matter. The public is not heard, and our concerns are not heard. And I would just, I'm here, I guess, because people are looking for somebody to stick up for them instead of walking around saying, "Well, we don't want to hurt business," you know. We got to give, we got to give somebody a chance. And one of the taxpayers, one of the ordinary citizens is going to get a chance, Mr. Chairman. That's all. I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll hear from Grace Mullin.
First of all, I just, oops. I'll get up here. Do I suppose to say my name and address and all that garbage?
Please.
Grace Mullin.
Yep.
357 Centennial Avenue.
Gotcha. For the folks following at home, we like to...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Doesn't matter who you are.
And I even know what ward it is, I forget, 5, right? 3, 5, we're 5, darling, we're 5.
6.
6, 5, no, we're 5. Don't confuse me with facts. 5, we're fact.
You're good.
I'm sorry, I was trying to be humorous, it didn't work. I just have to say, with the new water supply thing that you talked about last week, I must have heard from over 40 people how wonderful they thought it was. People that I didn't even know knew anything about it, were very excited. So congratulations. Apparently you got a lot of, I mean, these are some real estate agents I talked to, these are renters I talked to, these are, yes, they're mostly over 60, I admit, I mostly see. Anyway, I just think it's fantastic because it's so nice to hear nice things from the, from people. Second, thank you, the super seniors, and I do, I am very thankful, but I have to say, wards 1 and 2, whoever you are, they're only two wards that I have not gotten help from to get our senior project going, to keep our senior thing going. But I had thank you notes all written out, and they're sitting there on my counter where I left them when I ran out. But you'll, you'll get them, I'll see eventually. Just one more thing, and this is Margie's and Matt's thing, but I really want to hear more about these plastic bags because most of the seniors do not have a lot of money. They would love to bring new plastic bags. Well, I don't want to publicize it until I hear succinctly words on it from you two because they really want to do that, and I think that'd be a blast. Can you imagine having all the seniors come down here with their bags? And these are, you know, these people, I'm talking to them, I'm trying to get them to know who, what ward they're in, what, you know, who their representatives are. Hopefully in November they'll vote. We're certainly pushing that. And it's nice to have them think the borough's interested in them. So I thank you for your time. And again, this water supply thing, you won't believe how many people thought, oh, one more thing, congratulations for that meeting. That was the most phenomenal meeting ever. We had everyone interested and talking to each other, and it was so cool. I was so proud to be a member of our borough that day.
Thank you. Sandy Mau, you're up.
Sandy Mau, General Delivery. I'll address the library issue first. The issue with Fair Share, from what I can, from my research, goes back to 1982 at least. Now, most of you were not involved in the government at that particular time. However, you did come and you picked up where they left off. So my concern is, you know, everybody would like to have a neighbor like the Hannover Borough Council who's forked out six figures, and I'm being kind. I don't have the exact number, but I believe it's going to get to seven figures. I don't know why there wasn't some type of legal action. I know everybody wants to be good partners with the townships that border us, but I would think that the court would have requested that it would go to arbitration and not necessarily to a lawsuit. Now, the real reason I'm here is the drug dealing situation again. I know you don't answer questions at these meetings, but given what has happened this morning, where we find another mass shooting, and that makes the 286 so far this year. What liability does the borough face as a result of providing, A, a location such as the Guthrie Library and multiple others, and resources such as Wi-Fi to these drug dealers in order for them to conduct their illegal drug operation, which are notoriously violent? You, the borough, are placing the public in danger. You are culpable by being accomplices and providing safe passage throughout the town. Furthermore, entertaining complaints against those of us who have been very vocal about this drug dealing, particularly me, when you, they have the audacity to claim that I am harassing them, you better believe I'm going to harass drug dealers. They have no business being in this town, and not a single person in this town would advocate for them.
Sandy, I have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
After each mass shooting incident, we hear people say, "Never again, never again." And here we are again with another one. So the question begs to be answered, asked, why are you putting the patrons of the library and every other organization in this town at risk? People, as Mr. Holt referred, do not want to come into town. They don't like, it is not safe. They are afraid to walk the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, I have a submission for Sharon Narushov. Did I get it close?
Yes.
Nailed it.
Stayed awake that day.
Sharon Narushov, Leaven Willow Court, Penn Township. I know I have to come to the Public Health and Safety, but the Art Walk first Friday sounds good. I went to it. I'm not naive. There were some people there, and I walked around from Broadway Venue to Carlisle Art Guild and so forth. The decibel level was horrific. And I say, okay, if no one will, if death fears are what we have for adults, even teenagers, the babies, the children, one couple had a stroller and then a tot with them. I saw a few other children with families. It's supposed to be our commons. And people say, "Don't go downtown." Then we're surrendering our commons to scofflaws, aggressors, people of ill intent. And I mean, if, if somebody thinks a baby over here and a cycle here, that child is being impacted horrifically. Science proves it. Blood pressure, heart, brain, psyche, and spirit. So I think if we can't protect the children, which everyone is always saying, then what, why have events? Why propose ideas to bring people down? Because they're getting away with murder. Thank you.
Okay. I have no other submissions for in-room participation in the second public comment. I will ask community media to provide me assistance, opening us to any electronic communicators this evening.
Those joining us via Zoom, you are now able to unmute yourselves if you would like to address counsel. Those joining us via Zoom, you are...
Everyone like that voice? Make it, see if we can get John Wayne to do it. Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment and move into announcement.
I just want to, go ahead.
I'm sorry, okay, you have an announcement? Okay, you go ahead first.
So I just wanted to remind everybody, this Labor Day Sunday is the Chili Cook-Off. It is over at Mau Field from 11 to 5. They are running a free shuttle from Hillside Medical, and 100% of the proceeds go to local charities. And Six Whiskey Revival will be the headlining band, and there's all kinds of various activities and things for children up to adults. And I think Brian's going to be the first one to ride the bull. And I think Brian's going to be the first one to ride the bull.
There's like an oxygen holder you can put.
Yeah, so come on out, it's always a really good time.
Right. Okay, that'll move us into, yeah, I guess announcements. Manager Lewis, you have the date, I don't see it printed here, if anyone wants to come for the, the Budget Workshop in September?
September 23rd.
Yep. I know there was a public comment.
September 23rd, 9:00 to 3:00 here in this room.
And the public is welcome to attend that. Yep, yep, Counsel will be participating, but the public's come, welcome to come and listen, so, September 23rd in here. Okay, with that being said, I wish us all well till we meet again, and request a motion to adjourn.
So motion.
Second? All in favor, aye. Opposed, nay? We are adjourned, thank you.